Welcome, everyone. I know this space is kind of much larger than what we're used to. If you'd like, you can move up so we're not shouting. If not, that's okay, too. We'll do our best. I'd like to welcome all of you and thank you for coming and allowing us to have great conversation and hopefully have any remaining questions answered. So at this time, I'm going to open up the meeting by standing for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Hammond?
Here.
Vice President Clements?
Here.
Trustee Daley?
Here.
Trustee Parr?
Here.
And Trustee Schwartz?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to take a moment of silence for Casey Gel, a 2013 Haldane graduate who passed away last week. Okay. So I think everybody knows why we're here. We're giving an opportunity to share some more budget thoughts with everybody. And Cecilia did a great job in announcing that we do have a sign-in sheet. We please ask if you do'd like to speak, sign your name in. If at the time you want to pass, that's okay. You can just let us know when your name is called that you'd like to pass. We're also going to be limiting time to two minutes. Please don't take offense. We just have to kind of move things along. So...
Do you want to remind people that any comments have to be made from my question?
Oh, and as Cecilia mentioned before, please come up to the mic if you'd like to make any comments. All right. Without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Bowers.
So, good evening, everyone. You know, I'm looking around and I'm going to start by apologizing for those that have heard me talk about this over the last week or so. You're probably going to hear me be repetitive because there are certain things that we want to make sure that everybody knows and everybody understands. And so those things are going to be part of the introduction and also what we're going to be talking about this evening. So we added this budget meeting because we didn't feel that everyone was settled in certain areas of the budget. And what we tried to do with this budget year, and for those of you who are new, and this is the first time that you've been here, we had a deficit that in our rollover, which means the amount of money we would have to offer the exact same things next year that we're offering this year, we had a deficit and we had to figure out where the deficit was going to come from. And we proposed a number of different scenarios. So if you've been following the different meetings, each meeting, we kind of had a combination of different ways that we could balance the budget. And it was everything from the reducing the number of classes in third grade, which is presently four classes, to three classes, which would have made the numbers shift from the high teens to the low twenties. Based on the personality of that class, we chose not to do that. We were looking at unique ways of offering special ed services and with the, some of the concerns that were generated with that, we figured out a way to do other things in lieu of that. And we're at the point now that we're pretty close to coming to a number that I think, hopefully, everybody is happy with. This includes a number of different places that we're going to get funding so we can decrease the deficit. And what we tried to do is we tried to, we tried to spread out the deficit or the issues so nobody, no one thing, no one area was taking a major hit, and every area was giving a little. So through the conversation, we kept offering different solutions. We kept hearing different opinions. And we would go back and we would tweak it or refine it or create a different area or a different focus for the, for the next rendition. We are offering you tonight the fourth rendition of the budget. Somehow, in between all the conversations, there were a couple of items that seemed to get linked. And there, there was an opinion or there was language out there that, that really made it appear that the district was trying to decide on one thing or another. And that's just simply not the case. There were, if you read back and if you go back into other tapes of our board meetings and you see it, what we were doing is we were talking about different ways of creating a balanced budget that was fair and equitable to everyone. And we had, it was interesting, we had different opinions, very different opinions out there. And as we would introduce a concept, we would begin to get letters from concerned citizens. And it really was every concept that we introduced, we had a reaction to. And so we understood that there are passionate people out there that are really trying to figure out the best way of dealing with a situation, in a bad situation. You know, I fear that this is going to be repetitive and we're getting to the point budgetarily and at Haldane where we're having difficulty finding the places to go to balance the budget. But I can tell you certainly for this one, we looked under every possible scenario and tried to figure out the best place, and no one place is taking a major hit. So the two things that somehow got gelled together as this or this was our library program and the potential of getting an SPO. And we had very passionate parents really support the library program. We had very passionate parents really support in increasing the security. And we took different pieces and different parts of everything. And so tonight, what we're going to be sharing with you is what we feel is the most fair, equitable, and appropriate solution for the kids. And we are, I have to say that we have tried to be as non-political in this whole process as possible because my job, our job, is to represent every person in this room and make sure that your children have the most we can possibly give them. I'm not going to be here next year, but I am going to stress the importance for you to make sure that you understand what needs to be done during the next budget cycle. There needs to be, if you, if you have a voice and you want to share and you really want to push some kind of political agenda or concern, it should be the fact that the state is not providing enough state aid to districts that are considered of either moderate or, or upper wealth. And our wealth ratio is considered to be higher than the average wealth of New York State districts. So we get less of the pie. And as the result of it, I mean, in the first, again, if you haven't been, listened to all of the different components of our budget process, the first run that we got from the state gave us an additional $4,000. So we were given $4,000 more for next year than we were this year. And I think you know with contracts and inflation and all the other things that go along with balancing a budget, that was, was going to do very little. When they actually voted in April on the state budget, we got an additional $55,000. So we were about $60,000 more this year than we were last year, but that's still not going to do it. So we need to go into a place that's going to help us get the funding. I had some information that came from NISCUS that I passed out at the last budget meeting, the New York State Council of School Superintendents. And I explained that on that was, it was our budget run. It was what the state was going to give us through the year. And on the bottom was something I hadn't seen before, and it kind of returned to me an understanding of where we are financially. And years ago, before the tumults and before 2008 and everything fell, the bottom fell out at Wall Street, there was a 10-year promise that was given to school districts. And they were telling us over a 10-year period how much state aid the district would get each year because we are one of the only businesses, and if you just think of us as, in this situation, as a business, we are one of the only businesses that has no idea how much money they're going to have to spend as they go into the budgeting process. Generally, we don't know what's going to happen until the state balances their budget, which is April 1st, which is relatively close to the time that the board has to adopt it, which will be next week. So on the bottom of it, it showed the deficit of where we were or where we are today with the promised value of what we were supposed to get as far as state aid. And it was just under a half a million dollars. So the money that they're giving to us right now is a half a million dollars less than what was promised many, many years ago. But it's not a half a million dollars in, a singular half million dollars. It's a half million dollars year after year after year. And so as you look at the number of years that it was promised and you look at the deficit, that is coming, the deficit remains, and that is coming from New York State. We just, luckily, we had something that was called the gap elimination adjustment that just went away. Was it last year or the year before?
The year before.
The year before last. Where not only did we have a deficit of a half a million dollars every year, but then they would give us money and they would say, okay, here, have $100, we're now going to take 20 of it back. And so the gap elimination adjustment was the money that they were taking back from us once they gave it to us so they could then balance their deficit, and they would give us one. So the budgeting practices in New York State over the last many years has been very, very difficult. And it continues to be difficult. And what we've been trying to do is look into the budget and look into the practices and try to find just about any place we could that we would, we could pull a little from here and a little from here so we wouldn't have to cut program. We're at the point now that we're getting, we're getting to the point where we're going to have to make accommodations with program. And this year, when people were hearing us make accommodations with program, we don't want to make it. We don't want this to happen, but it's necessary in order to get a balanced budget. And in order for you to vote on the budget in May, we have to make sure we present to you a budget that's balanced. So it has to come from somewhere. So yesterday, I kind of reiterated throughout the meeting that, at our safety meeting, that it's, we're taking some from everywhere that we can to try to make it, again, as equitable as we can. So there's a little from here, a little from here, and we try to meet everybody's requirement. So as we present to you the fourth budget, there will, there will be information that may be new to you. There'll be information that could be a repeat of what we talked about in the last budget meetings, but this is what we're now offering. So there is no political agenda here. There is no preference here. What we're trying to do is make the best of the situation we have and to provide for you the best we can. And we've, where we've suggested one thing, we have compromises. And we have compromises all throughout the budget. And so there is, you know, we're going to tell you what we believe we can do. We're going to tell you what the deficits, what needs to happen, and we'll go from there. Okay. So as I said, this is budget proposal number four. What we have done is we've looked at some of the educational enhancements that we wanted to bring in. And in this budget, there are some things that we're actually adding to the budget. And so there are a number of educational enhancements that we're trying to include and, but they are, what we believe is they are needed at this point. I also'll talk a little bit about security because you're going to hear about it. But I also want to explain that this is not a knee-jerk reaction to what has happened in, over the last three to four months. Parkland was a terrible situation that, that really reminded us about the need for us to be very vigilant in safety and in other things, but that was one of many instances. So this is not a knee-jerk reaction to one situation. What it is, is an understanding of what the best practices would be here, based on who we are and our campus and all the other things that go into that. So that would be one area of enhancement. So we'll also be talking about, we have a bus purchase, which we do every year, to make sure that we have a fleet that's relatively up-to-date and isn't highly expensive as it breaks down on a continuous basis. We'll talk a little bit about, we're going to ask you to vote for, to reestablish the capital reserve fund that has existed. And we'll talk about the library, which we collect the money for. The money goes to them. It doesn't come to us, but we actually collect it and hand it over. And then a contingent budget if the budget were to go down and would have to go down twice. So anything you'd like to add to that?
No.
Okay. All right. So we had a number of different areas or different topics that we considered in this budget. So we talked about how we could, how we could work best using our library services, our TOSSAs, which is teacher on special assignment, which are basically teachers that we pull out of the general education classroom and they, they provide services for, and one of, an example of this are learner profiles or the DCI, the Discover, Create, and Innovate classes. We had TOSSAs in both positions. We're looking at our general ed numbers. As we talked about the third grade, we are keeping the four sections of the rising third graders coming up because of the numbers. And we also looked at the best practices within special ed. And so we talked in between all of these areas to try to come up with the number that we have. So what we are recommending, based on everything coming together, is we are not looking to reduce the special ed staff or the services. So we are actually, there is a position that is a part-time position that we're not going to be hiring for, for next year, but we're actually taking somebody who has been in a TOSA, a teacher on special assignment, and who is a special ed certified teacher, and they are going back into special education. So even though we talked about special ed services, we are providing the same services in a different way. And we have, as I said, we have two areas or two TOSSAs that we're looking, looking at changing for next year. In this budget, we have a certified librarian at the middle high school and we have a librarian that also does a partial program in the garden at the elementary school. That is a teaching assistant at the elementary as it exists now and a elementary, middle, high school librarian. What we are doing next year, and what you're going to hear a little bit about, is we are going to have some more integrated co-teaching practices between the teaching assistant and the librarian. And they will actually be teaching our sixth grade classes, which they teach on, on the Internet and safety and all the things that we want our students to know as they start moving into using some of the, the computer and social media devices and have to figure out how to navigate those, like all our kids that move into that. And it's a very tough thing for them to learn. So both of those are in this budget. We have four sections of third grade. We have three sections of kindergarten. Last year, we had two sections of kindergarten. This year, our numbers are higher, so we're going to be back into offering three sections of kindergarten for next year. But our kindergarten into first grade, our rising first grade numbers are in the low 30s, so we're only going to have two sections of first grade next year. So that's just based on enrollment and what we think will be the best practices for all those kids. We are going to continue to offer. It's going to be done differently than it has in the past, the middle school and then the high school DCI classes. This year, Heidi Gessen and Simon Duder taught those classes. They will be taught. They may not be taught by the same people next year. And as we figure out the staffing and the shifting in staffing, that will, will let you know, and that will be coming, that will be forthcoming. We have included as a new area, an arts coordinator's position, which we haven't had in the past. So that's going into the budget. We have a school peace officer that can, that remains in the budget. Initially, we were looking at two different upgrades in security. We were looking at a SPO, not an SRO, but an SPO, which is a school peace officer, which is generally a retired police officer that becomes a school peace officer, comes into the building. And the benefits of an SPO is, as all New York State employees, when you retire, you can make up to $30,000. You can't make above that. So the SPOs come in and they provide a service for the districts for $30,000. And it is not, they don't have the breadth of, of opportunities that our SRO has, and they can do slightly more things than the SPO, but they are a police officer and it's something that we feel is an appropriate response with two buildings. So the other thing we were talking about is in the entrance out there, at 2:00, when the middle school and the high school, when the day ends, our kids start moving in and out of the building. They have practice. We may have people coming into the building and doing different things during the time from 2:00 on through the day. We have no security at that point. And so we're opening the building. Our elementary students are still in session for the last part of their day. They are getting ready for dismissal. We have kids in and out. And we are proposing having somebody that moves to this entrance at 2:00 or thereabout and has an idea of who's coming into the building. So that is, originally, we had a person doing that and a person in the SPO position in the budget. One of the modifications we made between the third and the fourth budget is to basically unite the two and offer for the district a swing shift SPO that would start at 10:30 and be here for all the lunch periods, continue through, and then have their day end at 6:30. So they can do the after-school security down here. They have an idea of who's coming in and out of the budget, but from 10:30 to the end of the day, they're also here serving as an SPO. One of the areas we want to make sure that we're kind of enhancing is recess time, and we would like to have somebody present when our kids are outside. And so this would allow for both the high school, middle school, and elementary school recess periods to have some oversight there. So we have taken a $60,000 budget. It's now down to $35,000, so that went back into the budget as well. We have, we are going to need some additional technology assistance in the entrance ways, and we are looking to buy systems that allow us to know who's coming into the building. They swipe the driver's licenses of the people coming in. There's a sticker that's printed out with the pictures, the person's picture, the date, where they're going, and information about the duration or the time that they came in. This will be, it's different than what we've been presently doing. It gives us more information and plus, it's linked into the system that we have that's related to, it's the sex offender registry, if there's any orders of protection or any concerns that come up based on the family situation. If there's, if there's a potential problem, that would be, that would come up when the person would come in. And it just gives us an understanding of who's coming into the building. The communication could happen with, then with our SRO or SPO. And I can tell you, and I think that there's, there's also some misunderstanding in why we would want this. I can tell you, 99% of the people that, or the districts that have SPOs or SROs, they don't, it's not for an active shooter scenario. It's for these kind of societal situations that come into a school district that allows for everybody to be educated. And we find ourselves on a regular basis, and it's not just Haldane. It's everywhere that you are in a school setting. When you have a cross-section of society, you run into many different things that we have to contend with. And we try to be fair. We try to be even. We try, again, to be apolitical, but we, but there are times and there are situations that we need to understand and we need support. And if there's an angry parent, or if there's an argument between kids, or if there's, if there's something that we need additional support for, we have it. We are maintaining our athletic trainer position. We have had an athletic trainer, which she has, she has been awesome and very helpful and kept many of our kids safe in sports. She's been with us for a couple of years and we're now adding insurance to her salary in order to keep her. So that's the, that's how we are maintaining our athletic trainer. We're giving her the same benefits that we give other employees in the district. We are, we need to maintain, we have a lot of requirements and mandates that come from the state education department where we have a lot of reporting. So we are, this, the funding that's necessary to manage this, manage the system and the software is in there. And we are trying to preserve professional development. There is one place that we're cutting back on. We're not going to allow for summer travel this year. And so we were sending our teachers to the New Tech Network Summer Institute, which is in St. Louis, Missouri this year, was same place last year. Year before, it was in Florida. We were sending teams down. This year, the finances, they just don't, it doesn't allow for that. So we're actually going to bring, bringing New Tech here and having the training here.
Dr. Bowers, are, is...
I'm kind of anticipating some questions on, on all of that information. Is now a good time for me to kind of throw them out to you? Are you going to hit these again later when we talk about the money piece?
Yeah. I mean, if you go to the next slide, I think that that's where...
Just keep going.
And if you want to ask questions, I'd be happy to answer now, though.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if you can give a little bit more information about how the K-12 library will work with the moving pieces of the, the people and how it currently is, right? We have a TA in the elementary school library and we have a certified librarian, middle school, high school. Can you talk a little bit about the new configuration, like how would it work, where, where people are, are moving around to? Or is that not something you're ready to talk about?
Yeah, sure. So with the library, with our, I'll start with the TA.
Yeah.
The teaching assistance day is a full-time equivalent or full day. And probably somewhere between .5 or .6 of that day is actually used to run classes for our K-5, and in this case will now be our K-6 students. And so they come in and it's, they're read books, they browse and borrow, they may do some things periodically outside. And so that curriculum is still going to be in place, will still be there. Nothing will change there. What is going to happen and will be a change is there will now be more instruction there with the elementary sixth grade class. And our librarian will come down and the two of them will co-teach those classes together. So that will add a little more of a full-time equivalent. The rest of the day could be used for different type of events. It could be used in different places. And so that's where, I would say, right now, we're probably looking at .75 of classwork with the teaching assistant. The high school librarian, mid-high school, middle school librarian will be predominantly there, but will come down and work in the elementary library with the teaching assistant for the sixth grade classes. And we're also going to be looking at more curriculum development and curriculum alignment. So the, the teaching assistant works under the auspices of the high school, middle school librarian. And in that situation, she will be working with the teaching assistant for curriculum development. And so she will be full-time. The teaching assistant will be full-time. Doesn't mean that the teaching assistant may not do some things, minimal things that are outside the library, but everything that exists in the library today will exist in the library next year.
And, go ahead.
No. Sorry.
I was going to say, you didn't mention the word garden. And so that's like a big thing that's been discussed. So can you talk, can you talk about how the garden fits in?
So the garden program, there really are two different things we're talking about here. The garden program basically started and continues as a volunteer program where parents come in and work with classes with the garden. One of the parents that was an integral part of the garden committee group, parents, was somebody we hired in the library.
parents, was somebody we hired in the library. So there are components or parts of her program that also include the garden. And so depending on the circumstances, depending on the use of the library, there may be times that she takes them out of the library. But the program itself is, is a literary program. And there, there is some flexibility to overlap with the garden. But we're really talking about two things. Our teaching assistant does, is not the person that provides the garden program. It's our volunteer parents. And there is some work that is done at the elementary level.
And just for clarification, teaching assistants get a general certification. They don't get certified in a specific subject area?
Correct.
So schools use teaching assistants. And sometimes if one has to be excess, you know, there's, there's some dancing around to make sure that everybody's being covered. All state mandates are being covered. All the student needs are being covered. So it's not like a teaching assistant is, oh, you know, certified in math, so they teach math. It's a teaching assistant is there to serve as the school and the school places them, or the administration places them as needed. Is that correct?
So there are two support groups, aides and teaching assistants. Teaching assistants are certificated employees through the state education department. What happens now is there is a Level 1, 2, and 3 teaching assistant. And there, there is some college required in order to move from Level 1, 2, and 3. But you have to go through all, all of the three levels before you can become a permanently certified teaching assistant. Because teaching assistants are allowed to teach, but they are not allowed to teach on their own. So they can teach under the auspices of any teacher that is a certified teacher. Aides cannot teach. Only teaching assistants can teach. Aides can support and help and work with kids that need additional services. But they themselves are not teaching assistants. And they do not have direct teaching. We, they, they can be, teaching assistants do teach under the auspices. They don't necessarily have to be in the same room as the teacher. But there has to be oversight and there has to be training and there has to be curriculum development. So we're going to be moving into that a little bit more next year.
Are there a certain amount of periods that a teaching assistant can teach under the auspices, or are there limitations?
Well, the teaching assistants generally will reflect the type of day of the teacher. So if they're teaching at the high school level, it's, it's more reflective of what the teachers are doing. And if they're teaching at the elementary level, it's more reflective of the teacher's day.
And something else that was brought up about the libraries by a community member about, you know, making sure that we are filling state mandates, you know, between having a certified librarian in the middle school, high school, full-time or part-time. And there's different rules and regulations for that. Can you talk about where we fall within those rules and regulations?
So I think there could be some confusion between where we fall with the regulations because our middle school houses 6th through 12th grade, or 6th through 9th, 6th, 8th grade, and then the 9th through 12th at the high school. So the secondary is considered 6th through 12th grade. However, in New York State, the 6th grade, the certification of 6th grade is elementary. And so the teacher who teaches any of the 6th grade classes has to have elementary certification. So we have departmentalization in 6th grade. They're elementary certified teachers and they're working through it. So if you look at the numbers in the secondary school as 712, which matches the certification, we are under, under 500 students. If you included the 6th grade, it would be over 500 kids. But as we, because the teaching and the certification is elementary, we do not include the 6th grade in there. And to make it more clear, we're going to have the teaching of the classes done by both the elementary teaching assistant and the secondary librarian.
I see. Okay, I also have some questions about the arts coordinator position. Do you want to talk a little bit about what that person will be doing and why we need it?
So the arts coordinator, we are, it's not going to be identical to, but a few years back, we created coordinator positions for grades other than the high school. And we have math, science, and technology. We have humanities. And we have all the others, all the other topics or classes other than the four cores, so we call it encore. So we have those three different positions that were created. We did not have one for the arts. So now we are including the arts in the coordinator's position for the first time next year. And there was a request for that to happen and we were able to meet the request.
So that person will be helping coordinate the concerts and the events?
Yep. And also will help with the plays and the areas of, it's, it's more the management of all that. And you have people that come out and they produce all the great things that we see in our arts program. But there may not be somebody coordinating behind the scenes. And that's what will be.
Right. Well, up until now, probably the coordinator has been a parent volunteer.
That's right.
Right. Okay. So then, my, my last question before you move on is the school peace officer. So one of the questions that I feel like comes up a lot is, you know, what is this person's training with children? And I don't know if you want to speak to that a bit, or Mr. Shelters or Mr. Piazza wants to. But, you know, there's concern, I think, that this person who has a gun is going to, all of a sudden, be around kids. And does this retired police officer know how to be around kids in a safe and appropriate way? So I'm just wondering if somebody can talk a little bit about a school peace officer's training for that.
Okay. And we asked Matt Shelters, our SPO, SRO, to join us tonight. And one of our prior SROs, Paul Piazza. So would you mind coming up and just talking a little bit about the training of the SROs and the SPOs?
Thank you for coming.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Paul Piazza. I work for Putnam County Sheriff's. I was your former, former school resource officer. This is Matt Shelters.
I'm Matt Shelters. I'm the current school resource officer here at Haldene. And I have to talk into the mic, apparently. What was the, what was the direct question that you want answered?
I was just wondering if you could speak a little bit about the school peace officers' training specifically with children? You know, because I think there's a little concern that, you know, would and, with an armed person, another armed person, do they necessarily know how to interact with children specifically?
It's a little bit of a complicated question in regards to the training. Because really, none of us are specifically trained just in children. When you're looking at the school peace officers or the SPOs, they're retired law enforcement agents, which means that they have over 20 years of experience in law enforcement. So they're doing the same thing that I was doing before I came into the school. We're out on the street. We're interacting with the public on a daily basis. A lot of the time, unfortunately, that is with kids. So they have, you know, more experience than I do in years, you know, on the force, years being out in the general public, years dealing with, you know, very tense, sometimes, you know, very tricky situations involving juveniles. But there's no real direct training. Like, we don't go to, you know, go to a, a direct school in how to deal with, you know, the, the first graders or second graders. It's more of a personality and a trait aspect of the SPOs that they're looking for. And that's why they are, you know, hand-selected. Each SPO and each SRO is individually picked for those qualities. Because they do maintain and have those qualities and personality that would work well in a school district and well in a school setting. Our office and, you know, our sergeant that is in charge of the youth bureau has specifically said that he is going to pick who, who he believes is best for that position. He's not going to put somebody into that position that would be any kind of disturbance on the school day or, you know, conflict with kids. People that are going to be in this type of position are the people that do, you know, handle kids, have kids, you know, and interact with kids very well and on a very child-friendly basis.
Yeah, and I mean, if you and Mr. Piazza are proof of that, I would say they do a good job with their selections. So is there anything specific that a school peace officer does for training? Is it just that they are retired police officers and their entire life, life's work of training is enough? Or is there like another thing that happens?
So again, everybody should understand that the SPO position, though the title sounds different, they do work for the sheriff's office. We do, all police officers and peace officers have minimum qualifications that they have to reach every year, which does include firearms training. We train our SPOs, okay? We have the same annual training. The SRO and the SPO has the same annual training at the sheriff's office, which includes live-fire training, weapons handling, long weapons handling, and also active shooter training. Putnam County Sheriff's does that training, has done that training longer and quite frankly, does that training better than a lot of neighboring agencies, really anybody even close in our geographic area. Other agencies come to us for that training. And our SPOs and our SROs go to that same training, same day, work together. So they are seeing annual training as is required by the law and as is required by our policy.
Thanks.
Is there? I'm sorry.
No, I was just also going to say that Matt is also part of our threat assessment team. We have a team of practitioners in the building that come together and are presently being trained to really figure out what, what we should be doing if there's a threat, if somebody is a threat or makes a threat, and how we determine what our next steps will be. So Matt, although he wasn't in his uniform and I almost didn't recognize him when I walked in, but he went through the training with us a couple of weeks ago. And so he is serving in, as a team member in support of kids. And we have multiple ways of determining and supporting the needs of, of a child that could be potentially in crisis. And this is one of the new ones. But Matt and Paul in, in the past was always part of that team. They're a trusted adult. They're an integral part of everything that we do, social, emotional type of supports that we give our kids. And they're a regular part of the school day. And, you know, I think that for, probably initially, they see the uniform. And then once they get to know them, the kids almost don't even recognize them as police officers anymore.
And that's, I was kind of going to try and touch base in regards to what a typical day as an SRO would be. You know, a lot of people do think of you as an officer with a gun. And my view, from being here so often, I don't even notice the gun. And I've seen you interact. And I think it's a great way to try to explain to the public what you do all day. I've seen you in the hallway at lunch, talking to students, talking to my son, because you're a Patriots fan.
My wife's a Patriots fan.
So I think it's important that we let the population know that it's beyond the gun. You're building relationships. You're building camaraderie among students and trying to prevent them from being the next victim or... So if you can speak a little bit about that?
A day in the life of Matt Shelters.
Yeah, a day in the life of Matt Shelters.
I'll try to speak more of a general basis. But obviously, every day is different. But for the most part, first and foremost, I am here for security. So that is part of my daily routine, is I am checking, you know, all of the exits. I'm checking the doors. I'm walking around, checking each classroom, making sure that there's no immediate threat on campus at the time. Besides that, every single day, you know, I'm in with different group of kids, whether it's, you know, K through 12. I could be in with the elementary one day, you know, reading books on safety in the library. I could be in with the middle schoolers, you know, going to, dealing with their health classes. And we deal a lot with opiates is kind of a, a big topic right now that I've been hitting on with them a lot. You know, we had an incident where somebody may have gotten hurt outside of school. And we go into the elementary classes and speak with the, the kids that may not have the skills in pedestrian safety, so to say. And we help, you know, I help to, to teach them about that. You know, days where there's a, a big assembly, you know, I'm around, especially outside at the main doors, checking the parents that are coming in and checking where, you know, whether we have a concert, what's going on in the building, making sure that that stays, you know, contained to where it is and that the rest of our children that aren't involved in that are safe doing that. During lunchtime is one of my favorite times because that's when I'm not, you know, teaching a class necessarily, but I'm in front of the kids. And I get to walk around and just mingle with them. And you'd be surprised by the amount of kids that will come up to me and just have a general conversation. And that's what I'm here for. I don't want them to be afraid of me. Obviously, you know, there is a, a certain level of respect with authority that comes with the position. But for the most part, I've developed really good relationships with a lot of these kids where they feel comfortable coming to me. And they have come to me with certain situations that they don't feel comfortable with that are going on and are able to get me to help them, whether it's bringing it to the administration. You know, most of the time, it's not helping them in a legal matter. It's helping them with something that is going on in their daily life. You know, if I have to get them in touch with the, the crisis team or if I have to get them in touch with the administration here at the school, they see it kind of as a go-between. I will say, we have a great group of teachers here. And for the most part, the kids do feel very comfortable going to the teachers. And I'd say, in a way, I'm almost an extension of that, where it's a friendly face and it's somebody that if they not, if they're in a class and they don't necessarily want to go to that teacher, they can come to me, you know, while I'm walking around. They, they all know where my office is. They all know when I'm walking around the building. They see me, they come up and say hi. It's just every day, it's different. And it's just interacting and developing that positive relationship is really the, the primary goal of what I, what I'm doing here on campus. So I wish I could tell you exactly, you know, what's being done every single day. But again, it's really very varied. And that's what keeps it interesting, keeps the day busy.
So can I just follow up? So, you know, because we're, we're talking about, you know, bringing the, a second officer. So when you talk about, like, if you're reading, oh, I'm sorry. If you're reading in the elementary, so you're in the elementary school. So if there were two offices, there would be an ongoing communication between where, so you're in one building, the other officer should then be in the second building? Is that, would that generally be, be what would be going on?
That would be ideal. It would all be dependent on our, our policy that we put in place or what we want to happen. And it depends on the day. It depends on what I'm there for. If I'm down here because there's, you know, a PTA meeting and there's something else going on within the building where there are parents coming in, you know, it might be a, a better idea to have two people down here, one at the meeting, one walking around. But ideally, that's what we would like, is if I am down here, especially in the cafeteria, it's the, you know, the furthest place on campus. If I'm down here, we want somebody to be able to be up at the high school, walking around with the high school kids. Because unfortunately, I can't be in two places at once.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Bowers, I know that since, and since, well, since we first had an SRO, we've had great, positive, collaborative work with Cold Spring and with the Cold Spring Police Department. But my memory, and I want you to confirm or disconfirm this. So when, I had just joined the board when the decision was made to bring on the SRO. And one of the things, I was, one of the, that the issues that was brought up at the time was there had been a safety, a, a serious safety situation that happened nearby. And the district had reached out to the Cold Spring Police Department. And there was not a police officer available to come to the school at the time. Do you remember that? Am I remembering that correctly? And so I, I actually think one of the things people, you know, I'm, I'm also on the Nelsonville Zoning Board of Appeals. So I've got this whole amazing, like, appreciation for how much research people in this community can do. But so people have been doing a lot of research and presenting that. But one of the things I think I wanted to place this conversation in the context of, it's not just numbers of SPOs or SROs per kid or per building. I think it's also important to look at the context of, 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 of what's, what's around us, right? We're on the western side of the county. There is a police force in Cold Spring that I think is made up of primarily part-time folks. And we have had experiences where we have called the Cold Spring Police Department and they have not been able to send someone. I'm remembering that.
And I think you're thinking back of the swatting incident?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So I know that I was, of the board members was the most difficult to convince of the necessity, but sort of hearing, I remember that really standing out to me as a, as an important situation.
And I can say, the Cold Spring Police has, they have been very, very supportive.
Yes, I know, yes.
And in that situation, as soon as they could respond, they did.
Right. And so this, and I meant, I really did try very intentionally not to... Right, and so this, and I meant, I really did try very intentionally not to, not to put down the Cold Spring Police Department, but to place
Right.
our location in a particular setting with a police department that is made up of, of, of part-time folks.
Right.
Not typically having more than one person on duty at a time, which then is, is, can become an issue.
Yeah, and in the situation you're talking about too, there was, it was an off-campus situation, so the police had to respond to that initially before they could respond to us. And so when, as soon as the sheriff's department was able to respond, we had the sheriff's department going to both places. And so, you know, it was one of those scenarios that was three years back, and, you know, by the time the police came, you know, we had, we knew exactly what was going on and where things were happening, and they were very helpful in all of that. Yep.
Yeah.
Can we just talk a little bit about the TOSSAs? Just to clarify what a teacher on special assignment, the point of that, and perhaps for those of us who are on the strategic plan understood that the New Tech Network, the point was, is that we were training a core group of teachers who would then be able to share the wealth of knowledge with a whole other group of teachers. And the point of that is so that eventually you have a school that is all working together, all with the same focus, and so you're not necessarily keeping people in those positions for great deals of time.
Right.
So maybe you can talk a little bit about that.
So one of our goals when we became a member of the New Tech Network was to, to grow expertise in our faculty, so our faculty could continue to train each other as we phased out of our work with the New Tech Network. So we have a five-year plan with the New Tech Network, and we're going, we'll be moving into the fourth year with them. By the fifth year, they're moving out, and we are, we become self-sustaining. So over the last three years, our teachers who were the first adopters of some of the new deeper learning strategies, they became the first teachers to be highly trained. And not only were they trained by the New Tech Network in order to use different pedagogical practices, but they were also trained to be coaches. And so presently, we have five of our teachers that have moved into coaching practices, and they are the ones that actually train all the new teachers instead of the new teachers that are being hired by the district being trained and going through multiple institutes through the school year with the New Tech Network. They are actually, the, the heftier of the institute that they go through to really learn how to use these practices is taught by our teachers. Three of them are TOSSAs, and as they build expertise, and they share it with other people, the, the way that they were training themselves will change, and they can move back into other positions. And so we will have, as we continue to hire new teachers, it's, it's kind of difficult to, to keep the momentum going when you have eighty to eighty-five percent of the teachers that are already trained in a practice, and how do you then bring the new teachers that come in to the same level as the teachers who are here? And in order to do that, it's the coaches. So we do have five coaches, they have been the teacher leaders of the community, of the, the teaching and learning community here. This year, we, we started our instructional council, which is a group of, it's both the coaches and other like-minded teachers that wanna understand and continue to develop and grow the practices here, and make sure that the practices remain. And so we've now have individual, all three buildings have their own instructional council. We've had them come together for the first time a couple of weeks ago. There's interchange between the different buildings, and the instructional council will now grow more expertise and capacity. So that was one of the, the functions of the TOSSAs, as well as teaching classes. And we had, we had teachers who were teaching learner profiles, which is part of our strategic plan. They taught in teams of two, they were integrated co-teachers or teacher teams. The one with the expertise worked with the other teacher, trained them, and now the one with the greater level of expertise can move into a different area as we now have another expert that has been trained. And so that's in many of the places that we're making changes. We're going to where we did have an ICT team that was creating and training, it will be the teacher taking it on by themselves.
So it was my understanding that the teachers on special assignments were never going to be on their special assignment for specific lengths of time. The point was, was exactly what we just discussed, that they were the first at hand that did the training, and now it's time to kind of pass the baton on to others.
Right. And they are, and our early adopters were the ones that really kind of moved everybody forward at this point. We have all our grades, in grades three through ten, that have all been trained with the New Tech Network, and different groups kind of phased in over a multiple-year period. The grades knew when they were phasing in. The, the K-1, two certainly do a lot of the deeper learning practices, but they also are building the foundations for our kids, so there's a little bit more flexibility there. And the upper grades, as they're getting, going into AP classes and other college-level courses, we leave a little flexibility there. But our kids are moving from grade to grade as they go through, and they have similar teaching practices as they go through, and as we created the phase and process. So everybody has phased in at this point, or is about to.
So if we have a five-year plan with the New Tech Network, and we're bringing these TOSSAs back in now, what does that do to the next two years?
Well, the TOSSAs still will be trainers, they're still coaches. They may not be teaching the exact same class, but they will still be teaching, and they will be coaches. And so they will still provide institutes for our teachers, they have, they will still provide ASSD hours, they can come together, and teachers can come in and observe them, and they can come in and observe the teacher, and this can all happen as the regular day continues. So we have other teachers that have the capabilities of doing what they have been doing, and now will step into the position, and then you just continue to grow the expertise in different ways. And so the teachers that are now moving into that will grow their own expertise, and then will have a greater capacity than we did before.
So then in two years, are, are, we end our, our relationship with the New Tech Network, or we renew it in a different capacity?
No, we, we end it.
We end it.
And it's not that we can't send teachers to the institutes if we choose to do that, but we do not have the same relationship where they're coming in and they're helping to train us and go through the process. And so most of the organizations that really try to build capacity in school districts have a limited period of time, and then you're, it's almost replicating what you've already done, and so you wanna build it in a different way. And then if we have another area of interest that the teachers would like to focus on at that point, we could then have a, a different developmental strategy or group that we're working with. But it's a five-year, and it's usually four to five years, and then they build capacity, and then they move on.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. Sorry, we hijacked your rhythm. Yeah, that's okay. Okay, so what we're actually seeing in the, in the budget, what, what we're coming up with as the recommendation for the fourth budget. We are looking at reducing two teaching aides through attrition. Two aides that are going to be retiring at the end of the year, and in this situation, at this point, we believe that we do not need to replace them. If there is a need, and if something happens between now and then where we have, we don't have the staffing to do that, just as in any case, we will then look to hire somebody. But at this point, we feel that we can decrease the number of aides we have in the building by two full-time equivalents. We're reducing the professional development line, and we're saving money through the professional development occurring here this summer as opposed to paying for flights and hotels and, and food as people move into or, or travel out of the area. So that will be the second area that we're, we're pulling back on. We're reducing one sixth-period assignment, and we have teachers that have a regular teaching load, and periodically they will teach an extra class. One of our ICT teams, where we had two teachers, one of which was an early adopter and a coach that was teaching with another teacher, which was our middle school discover, create, and innovate teacher, she will now be able to teach the class successfully and at the same quality on her own. So the teacher, which was actually an elementary teacher, was teaching outside her school day and was given a stipend, so we're gonna be pulling back on that. We're reducing the allocation. We've had funding in the budget every year for our sports teams, and we have found that we've had, if there were a number of, or high number of kids that came out for a specific team, and we needed additional support and an additional coach, we have basically budgeted $10,000 a year, we're cutting that in half, we're pulling that back, and we haven't really needed more than that. So instead of keeping it in the line, we're trimming it, and so we're pulling back in that area. We're looking at fuel oil, we're trying to get the most appropriate expectation for fuel costs through the year. We believe that it's a little bit high, and we can trim from that. If we find that something happens with fuel oil and it becomes a problem later on in this, in the winter next year, then we'll have to look at another place to pull from. And we do have the unappropriated fund balance available for situations like this, so instead of keeping it in the budget, we're gonna be redeploying it and putting it in a different area. We have one teaching assistant that, the day will probably move from one full-time equivalent to a .75 full-time equivalent, so we'll be decreasing that person by .25. And we're, we're modifying the entrance monitoring plan by proposing the swing SPO that can do the support of the students during the day and also help with security in the afternoon.
And just to clarify, this just follows up on the question I asked earlier about teaching assistants. When, if you have to make the unfortunate choice to access a teaching assistant, you know, reducing their position or accessing completely, or whatever the case, because there's not a specific certification area, that's always done in seniority.
It's always done by seniority, yes.
Which means whoever was the last person hired is the first person accessed. It's not dependent necessarily on what they're currently doing, it's
Yes.
just the way the, the union rules.
Contractual.
Contractual obligations work.
And it's called, it's known as LIFO, last in, first out, and so that's the way that seniority works in, in all our contracts.
Thank you. You look, I'm in your way.
So, that's okay. So these are the dollar values of what's in and what's out. In, if they're, the dollar values are in parentheses, we've been pulling it out, and if it's not, it's, it's in. So we're looking at...
Can we expand that at all?
Yeah. I know, it's a little small.
Well, nobody can actually see it. Do you want us to read it, or can you make it bigger enough?
Yeah, well, I can't get up, though. Ann, would you mind being like Vanna White tonight?
Sure. Here, you know, there's this, can I?
Yeah, you can do that, so, but talking to the mic.
If anybody's looking at it on board docs, though...
Well, that's actually what, that's what people should be doing.
It's on board docs, so you can see it on your device.
But we'll also read it, so those of you that don't have access to it.
Okay, so you, you want me to just really actually read all of the numbers on there?
Just with the reductions and the numbers, and then the additions and the numbers.
Can I?
Make it bigger?
Do you go in presentation mode?
Yeah.
Do you want to do that?
Go out of presentation mode and just expand the size?
I guess I could.
He knows how to do it. Would you like to help? Here comes Damian, saving us once again.
Oh, you have that alternate presentation. I didn't know you had it set up that way.
Ann has her mouse here.
Here, do you want the mouse?
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
Not for that window. How is that? Take this.
It's bigger.
Yeah, it's a little bigger, it's short.
It's a little finicky mouse.
Here, you want this one?
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, it's better. Thank you.
Thank you, Damian. Thanks.
Okay, so I can see this now.
Okay, good.
So, all right, so under the reductions, we have the...
Do you want to start with the, for people who start with the rollover budget now?
Right here.
Okay, looking at the rollover budget and the target budget for the eighteen, nineteen school year, in order to do, have exactly what we would need, what we have this year, next year, our budget would be $24,400,521. But the target budget, the one that we actually, that still remains underneath the tax cap, and it's called a 2% tax cap, but it's never 2%, the amount of money that we're looking to expend under the tax cap is $24,070,392. So the budget deficit, where we started out, was $330,000, and we are at the point that that is now, has been zeroed out. So what we're looking at, the first line is special ed tuition. We have, we are returning students as we have in the last few years. We created a unique educational setting for high school students that we call the academy, and we have been very successful moving kids from outside high-cost special ed placements back into the district. They're in a small group setting. I think we're at the point that we may be graduating seven students out of the academy this year. And we graduated one last year, and I can tell you, it's, you know, it is such, it's such a joy, and it's such, it's just, it's a miracle that many of these kids are gonna be walking out with the kind of diplomas that they are. So we are returning two more students from high-cost out-of-district placements into the district. One will be coming into the academy, and the cost of those two placements is $154,000. We're, we're returning 2.0 full-time equivalent TOSSAs into the classrooms, and they'll be moving back into teaching settings. Some will be moving back into, we believe, grade five. We're also looking at teachers that were TOSSAs, that are special ed certified, that will be moving back into the special ed certification. That is $170,000. We have a .25 full-time equivalent in a TA position that we're decreasing. We are decreasing two aides through attrition. We are decreasing a sixth-period assignment. We are decreasing the contingent coaching allocations of $5,000. We are decreasing the professional development and the summer travel, and we are making more lean the fuel oil allocation that's in the budget for next year. So we are, the total reductions are, is $431,729. So now we are adding, and we are adding a school peace officer. We are adding enhanced entrance security, and this is to buy the computer system that we use to check people in. So that's what that's for. We are adding an arts coordinator. We are increasing the, the amount of technology assistance need, but needed by the district, predominantly for reporting purposes to the state education department. They keep asking for so much more that we're having trouble making it work with the people we presently have, so we're at the point that we have to hire into that to allow that to happen. Our software costs are going up, so we're including that, and our athletic trainer will be getting benefits this year. So the additions are a little over $100,000, and when you put it all together, we are balancing out to zero. So that is the balanced budget. Anything I didn't?
No, you, you covered it.
I think so.
Okay.
Okay. Want to take every opportunity that we can to also touch on the other propositions that the voters will have before them. Proposition two is our vehicle proposition, is to add 130 passenger bus for $55,000. Buses are funded through a ban, which is a bond anticipation note. It's a five-year debt instrument that we have a low interest rate on because we have high ratings in our Moody's score. So, the payment will not be due until the 1920 budget, when other bond anticipation notes are paid up. Just like to let people know, when they say, "Why do you always need a bus?", we're, have a very varied fleet, and some years we need a big bus, some years we replace minivans, depends on the condition of the buses and how old they are. I have found that if we have newer vehicles, we have less repair, and we can also get a higher trade-in value. So ultimately, our net cost by having a vehicle proposition every year keeps our expenses Proposition three is to reestablish the capital reserve. Our capital reserve was established in 2008 for a 10-year term for a maximum amount of $1 million. That term is up this year. We have benefited from having this capital reserve. We used money that we had put aside for the field when that was built. We also have, we used it last year. We used $100,000 of our capital reserve for the renovations in the big gym and also in the library. So in order to have that, if you want to call it a savings account, it's a reserve fund, in order to have that for another 10 years so that we could have those savings, the voters need to reestablish that for us. Also, just to let you know that we can't just use the money that's put aside without voter permission either, so you might see future propositions to use the money. You're giving us permission to save the money in a reserve account, but when we need to use it, it'll be, we'll have to ask permission on another proposition in the future. The library levy is something that we collect for the Butterfield Library each year since May of 2015, when the voters approved this. Every year, the amount remains the same, $73,150. You'll see it as a separate line item on your tax bill. That doesn't go to the school district. We turn that over to the library. We collect it for them because they don't have a means to collect their levy. As the superintendent pointed out at the beginning of the presentation, should the voters reject our proposed budget twice, you don't get a third chance. And the law, since the tax cap has gone into effect, is that you have to have zero increase in your tax levy. So should the budget be rejected twice, we would be here talking about coming up with an additional $496,627 of cuts from proposal number four, where we are right now. And that's, that's just the law. That's New York State law.
So there's no more contingent?
There's no more contingent budget, where the board says, "Oh, well, you know, these are operating expenses that we're just not going to have next year." Usually, equipment is cut and nonessential services are cut. That's the old version of a contingent budget. A contingent budget rule now is you will have no increase over your tax levy of your prior year. So, that is over and above the 300 and, was it 300? 330, I had 90 in my head. The $330,000 that we've been struggling to find, to fill that gap, this 496 is in addition to that. So I just wanted to let everyone know that. That's an important item to consider.
Excellent.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to open the floor to communication from the public. If you've signed the sign-in sheet, Ms. Farmularo will read your name, and you can come up. We will be timing to two minutes. And if you're not on the list and would like to speak, please feel free to do so also.
Or you can pass.
Or you can pass. If you're on the list and would not like to speak any longer, when your name's called, you can just feel free to say pass.
So we'll give a little, you know, signal, two minutes rounding, and then we will cut you off.
So we'll do it at 1:00, 1:30?
Yeah.
And then cut you off.
Okay, the first name on the list is Michael Genjulis.
How you doing? How many kids do we have coming from Garrison next year?
We don't know yet.
Still don't know yet.
We're assuming that we're going to be pretty much awash, and I think we'll know within the next couple of weeks. But we anticipate that we will have as many leaving as we have coming.
Once you get that, if I can get an email on that?
Sure.
Thanks. How many teaching assistants are there now?
I would have to, look, I think we're probably around 10.
Eight. Wait, Andrea's shouting from behind.
Eight. Eight. We're around eight.
Okay, and how many of them are full-time?
Almost all of them.
Almost all of them. Okay, so, because, all right, nevermind, it's my thought. Last year, last week's budget had a line item for, to reorganize the library media services for $63,198. That's no longer in the, this year's, this one's budget.
No, it's not. And what we did is, we did a reorganization with, with more of the, the way in which services will be provided next year as far as pulling people out of the library. And so we were able to come up with the funding and lieu of that. So both the librarian and the teaching assistant will remain for next year.
So basically, last meeting, we had more cuts of $456,752 than we do this week, which we have $431. So we added more money back into the pot. I'm talking about, I'm talking about just budgets, no names, no libraries, no SPOs, any of that. So $431,729, $456,752.
Right, that's, that is because the additions were reduced. So instead of subtracting what was an addition, you'll see that the addition section-
Was reduced by about $26,000.
Is reduced, the same amount as, as the top portion.
But that was reduced with the enhanced entrance security of $25,000, because that was $30,000 last week, now it's $5,000.
Yeah.
Correct.
No, there was the other person.
It doesn't line up, yeah.
There was $30,000 for the SPO, $30,000 for another person, security guard, and then $5,000 for the-
So you're saying it's the other person?
Enhancement, so that was $65,000. In this proposal, the $30,000 for the additional person has been taken out.
It was 60 total. It was 25. The $25,000 for the security guard, plus the five, was 30. It was-
So the 25 has been taken out.
Correct.
Well, I don't, my two minutes is probably off, so I'll go back and have my numbers up again, but I don't, I don't see where the savings was.
So, so that's, so that's what Dr. Bowers was talking about when she was talking about sort of taking the SPO and sort of turning them into sort of a swing shift.
Yeah, I know, I was going to say, if you get rid of all the positions, just strictly talk numbers, the numbers don't, the numbers don't lie.
Oh, but I don't know.
Yeah.
So the numbers don't, right.
They don't, they don't seem like they're jiving. My two minutes, I'm sure, is up, so I don't want to intrude.
Okay, well, we'll follow up with you, Michael.
Go back if I have to.
Thank you.
So, for that sake, if we're responding to something, do I take that out of their two minutes? Because-
I would.
Yeah.
Right? So I'm stopping that, just to be, just to be fair. So, Michael, just to be fair.
And I'm going to yield my time.
Okay.
Okay.
Because you were next.
Eliza Starbuck.
Thank you for all the hard work you guys are putting into this, and I can tell that it's a lot of stretching in many different directions, and you are trying to sort of please everyone. I think through the process, you know, my ideas have changed about some of the things, but I do have some questions that, or just things that I've mentioned repeatedly this week, was data. I would love to see what the budget looks like, the full budget, and that would be really helpful for me as I sort of try and process and understand what you guys are trying to achieve, to see the whole thing.
So one, just so you know, once the board adopts the budget, because right now, the budget hasn't been adopted yet. At that point, we then have a, we have the ability to show you all the components of it, and that will happen once the board has adopted it, which will happen next Tuesday, we believe.
But that would also mean, I mean, if she wanted to, we have, there is this year's budget.
Right, that would be really helpful to compare.
So that's, that's available to anybody who ever wants to see it, always in the district office.
Correct, Diana?
Yes, it is.
Always.
Is that something that can be put into the Google Docs where-
No.
Okay, so I'd have to go to the district office to get that.
It may be there.
It's huge.
It's there.
That's okay. I mean, I'm a numbers person, so I like looking at that kind of stuff. And while we're on the topic of numbers, I mean, there's, there's a couple of things that, there's still one thing that is unclear to me, and it could just be me not understanding, but the library position is still confusing to me. It hasn't been stated in a way that I understand. Is there a position that's being lost from what we currently have, or is there like a full-time position that's being reduced to a part-time? Because that was on the table earlier this week.
It was, but no, there's no loss of any library position-
Okay.
-for next year.
And, and she had mentioned the garden element of that. Is that going to be reduced in the new garden, or in the library continued program?
There will be a curriculum that has to be developed. We haven't, we haven't done the curriculum mapping and the curriculum planning that we will do because, that we should be doing, because we had a new librarian that started this year. Next year, she will have more oversight, and that's where the curriculum will be developed. There will be a garden component to it, but it will be primarily a literary situation.
Okay, so I think from my position and several concerned parents is that the garden program be preserved and kept at its full, like, level of richness. And I don't know if or why that necessarily is impacted by the budget, but I think that a lot of people are really passionate about it and that it's a real asset to our students.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, that's not a budgetary issue. I mean, that's a curriculum-based issue, and we're just trying to meet the balance of what the community wants. And there are many community members that are very passionate about it. There are many that would like to see a greater balance between the two components. So that's really going to be left up to the expertise of the people who are librarians and work with that, and with an understanding from our principal, and both middle school and elementary principals is what we're looking at, and what we're trying, what are, what we're trying to achieve there. So we understand that people, that many, many people love the garden component. We also have, had people ask us to look at that, so we'll strike a balance there as we have been trying to do with the budget.
Okay. And then another point that I just wanted to bring up, and I had said this earlier at the security meeting, was the necessity for the new technology that's being put in, the necessity for additional officers on campus. I think in the conversation, I've come around to see the assets of the officers in particular. I think our SRO is an asset to the school on a certain level. I've never been someone who felt that police officers belonged in a school, and I will say that Putnam County has an enormous sheriff budget of, they've planned for $18.9 million this year, and within that budget, they've planted, they've planned, they have a budget of $900-plus thousand for education and community development. So that money does exist in Putnam County. They would like to do more in their budget with that, and they're looking for schools and other organizations to fill in $700,000 there. So I wonder if we are facilitating that, and-
Well, the SROs are, there's, the part of the position is paid by the sheriff's department, and part is paid by the district.
Got it.
So that has been the case for many years. When they were first introduced, they were all paid by the county, and then the state changed that, and the funding was, the funding stream was no longer coming from the state. So then the costs became part of the district costs, but they do pay for part of it.
Right. I just think there should be a little bit more pushback to the county for the cost of that, because it is, we are on a tight budget, and it seems like it's squeezing us in ways when we all, I think, agree that security is important. So, thank you.
Could I just point out, in answer to your question, the 1718 budget document is on the website. It's under the annual budget section, under Board of Education tab, and it's the full document. It's 35 pages. It's a description of everything in the budget, as well as the numbers and the account codes. The report card is in there. The required documents are all merged together in one. And for 1819, as the superintendent pointed out, next Tuesday, hopefully, the board will adopt the 1819 budget, and after, on May 1st, the same document will be available for the public, that you'll, you'll see every year. It really follows the same format because it's, it's dictated by the state of what a budget, what information the budget has to have in it. Okay? You're welcome.
Okay, Pete Solmanson.
Hi, thank you also for all the work that you've done. It's very complex. You've answered most of my questions. I do have a question, however, when you were talking about the TOSSAs, and you were saying best practices, and talking about the coaching, is that directly related to the STEM program? Or to just teaching in general and, and the teaching standards of the school?
It's, well, it's, the STEM is included in it, but it's of all teaching practices.
Okay. And it seems that you are preserving, the STEM program is going to be preserved in, in the new budget, from what I understand? Is that correct?
It never was going away.
It was never going away. I was sort of led to believe-
Nope, that was wrong.
That it was. Well, it's good to know.
There is, there's a degree of misinformation out there, and we're trying, I mean, the whole premise of the development of this budget is to try to keep everything. And it may not be able to, it may not be 100%, but it's as close to it as we can keep it.
So the change with the DCI program, which is what you're talking about, is that it may be taught by a different person.
Correct.
But it will still be taught in its full-
Glory.
Glory. But it just may be taught by a different person.
Yeah. Thank you.
Danielle Pack McCarthy.
Thank you. Again, just to repeat, thanks for all the hard work that you guys have put into this. Just because this has become, I think, a little bit contentious, different issues and things like that, I just want to kind of put it out there that maybe there's, and I know sometimes people get on board towards the end because it's about, it's crunch time, and it's time to talk about this, but is there, and I know a lot of these ideas come out of committee, Board of Ed committee meetings, I've- I sit on those committees, and is there a way for the public to brainstorm ideas, like, on a more casual basis with the board before even kind of budget crunch time? You know what I'm saying? I'm just... I'm not sure. And I'm not totally knowledgeable of the whole process and how it works from start to finish. But I think that it may, like, open up communication, so that when there's these ideas out there, it's... People are able to get in on it before it becomes... Before it's in, like, an example-budget format. I'm a social worker, so I'm communicator, and I think... I don't know. I think that that would kind of take some... Take the level down a little bit. I don't know. I don't know if any of you want to speak to that, or...
I think we've tried to have a lot of PTA coffee talks. We've also been talking about the budget, I feel like, since January. Unfortunately, the weather hasn't helped us this year. So, a lot of times, I think that felt like a barrier, unfortunately. And also, this year's different, right? We haven't really had a budget that we've had to talk to this extent about. And we tried ourselves to say, what could we have done different? And really, it's the fact that it's a different budget.
But I also think it's going to continue to be a different budget, and that's what Dr. Bowers was getting at. So, and actually, I just read an article the other day, sort of talking about, like, new approaches to developing the budget, right? Like, over time. And I think it's something that we want to look into, because, I think, because every year that I've been on the board, and even the year that I ran, and watched the budget process unfold, like, I heard Ann Dino and Dr. Bowers, every year, coming up for places where we could be more efficient. Like, year after year, it was like being more efficient. It was identifying places where we could save money, where we could... Where we could both serve our kids better by having the academy and greatly reduce special ed out-of-district placement tuitions, where we could... I can't even remember all of them, but think about doing different kinds of staffing for different kinds of areas. And what Dr. Bowers was saying is, we've maybe done that as much as we can. And yet, we are still going to have the tax cap, and with fluctuating things, retirement amounts going up and down. Last year, we could raise our tax cap was less than 1%. This year, we're lucky. It's actually 2.6, right? So, I think we need to be prepared and think about collectively how we can go into what are very likely to be continued difficult budget decisions without it being as difficult as I think it has been. So, I think you make a good suggestion, and I don't know what that is.
Absolutely.
But it's going...
We're open to suggestions.
It's going to be hard, right? It is really... It's going to continue to be hard. I mean...
But I also think to also share that I do think the board and the district should and can reflect on how all of this is communicated to the public. Because there is so much misinformation in the public right now. And I'm hoping this presentation cleared some things up for some people, but maybe not. And there has yet to be a real opportunity to correct misinformation, right? And I think that we need to figure that out. Because when the misinformation doesn't get corrected, it starts swirling, and other people pick up on it, and then more stuff happens, and all of a sudden, it's something that it totally wasn't.
We have no STEM.
All of a sudden, we have no DCI, and, you know, people are... No STEM, and people are getting cut who were never even going to be cut. So, it's... I do think the board and the district needs to reflect on the process. And I think that this difficult budget year brought some of that stuff up where it normally hasn't come up, because we haven't needed as much communication, because it hasn't been that hard. And this year, we needed a lot of communication, because it's hard, and it wasn't quite there. So, I actually see that as something that we can do better.
And I will say this, as being on the board for 11 years. One thing that's been true across the different two superintendents, different board presidents that were in here. Mike was in here somewhere. I don't know. Okay? One thing that's true is coming to board meetings, okay? All my years, whenever a person or a group of parents have come to a board meeting, they have always left with... Maybe not the actual day of the meeting, but they have always gotten satisfaction, okay? Either by getting what they came to the board for, or getting the answer that, you know, gave them the direction of why maybe they couldn't get everything that they wanted. But they got a response. So, my answer to you would be, come to board meetings on a regular basis, and, you know, ask those questions. You'll get your responses, either as an individual or as a group. Because, I mean, as someone who was on the board, I always advocated for... We have communications. We have direct communications at a meeting through email, okay? That we don't communicate through Facebook and through this dot this, okay? That's not how we communicate. And so, if you want a direct answer, you come to the board meeting, and you ask it, and then you get it. Or you send an email, and then you get it. And I think that's how you'll get, you know, everything you want.
Yeah. And I can definitely feel that you guys have been receptive through this process. I just think, even now, I feel like you heard me, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Peter Sanders.
He's passing.
I'm sorry. Oh, he's passed. Okay. Steve Petkus.
Hi. I wanted to say thank you for... Really, since the last time I spoke up here, a week ago. I spoke sort of passionately and a little bit nervously at the time about the library. And in particular, there was that $63-some-thousand-dollar cut in the reductions column that I didn't see tonight. And I'm thankful that those positions are being kept. And I know some people, Eliza and Laura's going to come up after me. They have some concerns about what's happening with the garden aspect of the elementary library position. But I wanted to speak a little bit to... Well, first, to thank you for hearing me and hearing us to that extent. I spoke... I actually followed up, as you know, with a letter two days after last week's meeting. And it would be great to see that on the website. It was... I articulated some of the things I said last week, a little bit more in that letter, as you know. In particular, the state minimum requirement for the secondary library function. That is, our librarian media specialist, or she's certified librarian, I think. Yeah. And so, it would be great to see that letter up on the website. I figure if Joe Kertel can have one up there. Mine's a little bit better formatted, even though he's a former... Yeah. And then, people could see what I was talking about with the state laws. There really is a... They speak to the minimum requirements and the sort of, you know, prison gruel that the state mandates. And we are sort of above that. And Jen, I appreciated your anticipating some of the questions about that position and about the library program in general at the start, you know, before we entered the public forum here. But there really is, in the law, there's no way that secondary school is defined as seventh through 12th grade. It really does put us in that 500 to 700-student range with sort of five periods a week where that librarian should be teaching in that secondary school, sixth through 12. That said, it sounds like you're doing that, so I'm thankful. You really heard what I had to say, and as I said, I hope the letter goes up on the website. But I did want to repeat to everybody here a little bit from the letter. That is what the board heard and responded to, I think, which were sort of the ideals of what a library can be in a school. And as a librarian myself, this is sort of close to my heart. The library is the intellectual center of the campus, operating across the curriculum to support students' academic research and project-based learning, which, by the way, can include the garden. The library is a central hub for cultivating a strong reading culture. It's a place where students explore through maker activities and events. It provides a safe space for students and staff, and especially, in these times, the library serves a critical role in helping students learn how to access and evaluate information well. And that's not fake news. So, thanks again. I appreciate your time.
Your letter will get up on the website.
Oh, great.
On Board Docs? Sorry, not... So, just so you know, the way our correspondence works, if you've mentioned information that would be violated by the FERPA law, your letter will not go on the website.
Board Docs.
On Board Docs. Sorry, I keep saying the website. However...
The way that it's violated is us posting it would be violating it.
Us posting would be violating it.
Writing an email is not violating it. Us posting it would violate it.
Correct. So, FERPA.
So, it's protection for a student's identity. So, if you refer to the student that...
Student or staff.
A student or a staff, that if you refer to them to the point where someone could figure out who it was, we protect those children or staff by not posting it publicly. But your letter certainly has no relevance to the FERPA law, so your letter should go up, Steve.
So, that is my understanding as well. Okay. Are we moving on?
Yeah, sorry.
Next name, John Hedlund.
First, thank you. I know it's painful. And listening to all of us with all of our different opinions is also probably challenging. A suggestion for you, I know that there have been a lot of iterations of this. It would have been really useful to see, because you've taken to heart a lot of what people have said, and it's changed a lot, and I think tracking back to what those changes were and why they were made, that would have been really useful to see, just side by side. But a quick question, in light of the making sure everybody has clear information. Because I lost the thread, and that's just me. For the TOSSAs, what are they doing now? Because that's the biggest chunk of what's going. What are they doing now? What are they going to do next year? And what's going away? Because $170,000 or something's going away.
So, the TOSSAs this year, one of the TOSSAs was the person that was bringing the learner profiles in grades 4, 7, 9 into the district. And so, her position was predominantly developing, creating, and infusing the learner profiles. She was also... Did some special education work. So, next year, she's been team-teaching. She's been an ICT teacher. She's had other people...
What's ICT?
Integrated co-teaching.
Thank you.
And so, she has been working with the team, and the teacher that has been trained by teaching with her will be the one taking over. So, we had a team that is turning into an individual teacher.
Perfect. Thank you.
So, that's one. The second is our Discover, Create, and Innovate, and our middle-school technology teacher. And so, again, the same thing has been happening. We had a middle-level DCI class. We had a high-school DCI class. And the middle level, which is a rotation of kind of a technology rotation that's required by the state, was also being taught. So, we will have a teacher who was full-time in the academy that is going to be now a science-certified teacher that will be now fusing into the technology and the DCI. And we also have a middle-level science teacher who's been team-teaching, actually, with an elementary teacher who's a coach. The elementary teacher will not be with her next year, and she'll be continuing with the middle-level DCI.
I think I got it. Maybe. Okay. So, the team-taught, the team-led learner profiles is going to be an individual?
Correct.
Okay. The team-taught DCI classes?
Will be an individual.
An individual coming from the academy?
Well, one will be from the academy. The other is a middle-level science teacher.
So, two people splitting responsibilities, but not team-teaching.
Correct.
So, what's going away?
So, the...
Where's the savings?
The savings are the teachers that were in the teams.
Okay.
The teams will turn from two people and a training mechanism to one person teaching it.
Right.
And then, that frees up the teacher who is there as the coach. And part of the team will then move back into a different position.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Lynda Bolte.
Lynda, are you speaking?
Yes, I did. Lynda Bolte? Okay. Janine Harris?
She's good.
Pass. Okay. Lara Shehab Eldon?
Hi. Thank you for all the iterations and your hard work on this budget. We sent a pretty large segment of our community, our school community, local parents, grandparents, residents, taxpayers, sent a letter this afternoon after starting to hear hints about potential eliminations of library as a way of meeting the budget requirements. And I'm just going to read the contents of the letter and also say that, when I say a large segment of our community signed it, I mean 350 people at this point, and that's growing. And I just would really hope that in the discussion of the idea that the garden is not a component of the current library elementary program, that that would be revisited. Because that's how it was presented at the beginning of this meeting. And that's, from my understanding and from sort of the previous announcements of this position in 2016, that's not what was described as the position. So, while we understand it's a difficult budget year, decisions are finalized. We're concerned about the garden component of the garden librarian program at the elementary level. We want to reiterate that this innovative library-garden program at Haldane is one of our real strengths. It helps students build their literacy skills in an interdisciplinary way, connecting nature, botany, science, geography, math, history, local heritage. And it's really inclusive of multiple styles and levels of learners. And the way that I understand this program was created, and I think others can speak to this who were here before me, is that through a lot of incremental and thoughtful work over the years, Haldane parents, teachers, and the administration recognize that the garden can play an expansive role, and it has an ability to tie into the existing curriculum, especially literacy curriculum. And it also has to do with the position between the actual library is adjacent to the garden. Research has shown clear evidence that more time outside in nature improves health and overall well-being, and helps children reach their academic potential. I believe you've received letters that list this evidence. And, you know, we have this unique position, and we really feel strongly in our community that this garden component should be recognized. And if there's any way... We feel, as a lot of the volunteers that have joined, the volunteers that work and assist the garden librarian sometimes, sometimes go into the classroom, that this should be something that should reach all elementary students, K through 12... Oh, sorry, K through 5. So, if you characterize the garden component as something that's only volunteer, only certain kids will get it. And that was why the position was created, the way it was, as a library-garden position. And that was my understanding. So, I ask you if my understanding is incorrect, because I've seen announcements of the position on our school, you know, on our school documents that describe it the way I've just described it. So, if I'm incorrect, I just would love to hear why I'm incorrect. So, yeah. Thank you. Oh, yes. And I realize that there might be mention of staff name in this letter, so we will resubmit the letter without that mention, so that it can be included with the 350 signatures growing on the board documents. So, thank you.
But if it has children's names on it?
Yeah.
If the petition has children's names on it, it can't be published on Board Docs. It doesn't have children's names?
No, it does. All the signatures. There's signatures and names and ages.
Okay. We will remove those.
Right.
Dr. Bowers, do you want to speak at all? Because I do feel like that's a common concern. Can you speak at all to, like, where outdoor education, how its role is in the current... In our current school? Do certain teachers use an outdoor classroom, or...
And Mr. Wallach is here. I don't know if you can provide any other opportunities beyond the library component?
Well, certainly, our science classrooms, our middle-level science teachers as a regular. I know Mark Wick is outside continuously, and there's a lot of work that they do. Heidi Gessen also works out. There's work that's done at the high-school level. There's work that's done at the high school level that is, in earth science, I know that there are some outside components with that, probably biology, I'm not sure. I would have to have, I'd have to look, but I know certainly with earth science. So, there's, there are ample opportunities in addition to the library position. And I think that it was, there was an interest in expanding it, but I think it was, I, I think parents, even though they really shared their passion, it was always going to be a library program. And so, I think we're going to have to figure out exactly what it is and define it, because right now, we don't have a curriculum, there hasn't been a meeting of the minds, and I think that there's confusion. So, we're, we're going to have to do something to make it very clear what the curriculum is.
Next.
Do you have something to add, Mr. Rock? You look ready.
I just want to say that the garden happens to be right outside my office window, and I'm obviously not in my office all day long, but I do see students out there all the time, not just as part of the library program, but when there are parent volunteers for every class. Obviously, Dr. Bowers mentioned the middle school class with Mr. Wick that's out there very frequently. Teachers come out there on their own with their students, so there are students out there all the time. Yes, it, at the moment, is part of our library program, but as, as Dr. Bowers mentioned, it is basically a literacy program, and we need to put together a, a tighter curriculum for it, and we'll obviously do that between now and the start of the coming school year. So, the, the garden isn't going away at all. The garden is, is heavily used in, in many different ways throughout the day, not just by the elementary students, but by other, other students as well. So, I guess that's just a few extra words to add to that.
Thank you for clarifying that, because we, we have been getting emails through, through the Board of Ed website, our email, that we're eliminating the garden program. And so, to, just to clarify, we are not eliminating the garden program.
I think we have to, we have to refine it and have a clear understanding of exactly what it is, which I don't believe we have right now, and I think that's why there's misinformation out there. And so, I think that that's a goal-
Right.
-that we have to meet, is to, to really have a clear indication of what it is.
And I will say this, and I've mentioned this many times, that I, I am a principal, okay, in the city, and if I had a garden in my school, and the Department of Education came in to, to, to look at my garden, okay, or my superintendent came in to look at my garden, and, which actually, we do have a garden, we don't really use it that much enough. But if they did, they would say to me, where's the curriculum?
That's right.
They would say that to me. I, if I just said, look how beautiful my garden is, and, and it's not, that's great, but they would say, where is my garden? So, as the principal of the school, the Department of Education would expect that I would have a curriculum to go with it, that we're not just bringing kids out in, into the garden. It's a great thing, and we, we are keeping it, but, but we must have a curriculum to go with any type of educational program.
There, there is a garden curriculum, so it's not that there is not a garden curriculum. What we need to tighten is our library curriculum for the elementary students, and make sure that the two are integrated properly, with the focus on the skills that we need to make sure we cover in library, not just the literacy skills, but the research skills, the technology skills, that are really important for a library. But, but there, there is a written garden curriculum, we just need to tighten it up and make sure that we are a library that also has a garden attached to it.
And is not being eliminated.
So, you bring up a good point, actually, in speaking about K through 12 continuum alignment.
Alignment.
And maybe you can speak a little bit more to that in terms of where we are now, what we'd like to see, what a lot of parents have approached us about, and contrary to a lot of what we've heard here at meetings, but in terms of that they'd like to see more browse and borrow, more reading time, more of that. So, could you speak to that?
So, I think there's a number of layers, and so, one of the things, even if we have a garden curriculum, we have to make sure it is, it is regulated, and it is understood, and it's, and there's real consensus between the librarian, in which the teaching assistant works under, and, which is the person whose certification is being used, and the teaching assistant. And that really hasn't happened, and it's a first-year person, and so, now that's the next area that, or the next thing that has to happen. So, I think that there's a lot more coordination, integration, and it's, it really is, there has to be a vision of what we want in our library program, and how the garden fits into that. And I think, I don't know if we have that, and I think it's more of an independent curriculum that has, really hasn't been integrated with either the library or the librarian. And so, that's one of the reasons why we're having some modifications in the way we're going to be organizing our library staff for next year to allow that to happen.
Can I ask a thing? This discussion?
It's not a discussion. You can take a comment.
You can put your name on it.
It's just, it's just a way to that point.
Okay, yeah.
I can say it whenever. Am I calling on the next? Cory wants to be added, too.
Cory wants to be added?
Cory's on. Cory's on there. I thought I was up.
The next name on the list, am I reading that now? Evelyn Carwhite?
Is she here still? Here she comes.
Hi, I'd like to also thank you guys for the amount of work that you've done. I know that, you know, I'm one of many people that are very mindful of how difficult it is with a consistently underfunded budget, that it's very difficult to make these cuts, they aren't easy, and I appreciate that you've been so responsive to the community at large. I do wonder, since this is a problem that comes up annually, is that the state has been underfunding public schools in general, our public schools specifically, since, especially since the recession, that monies that were supposed to be promised to our district have not been coming in, and they won't likely. So, before, you know, we look at eliminating beloved teachers in the, in the district, is there a larger look at, you know, if we're actually leaving no stone unturned, wouldn't there be a lot of savings if we were to combine districts with Garrison, saving not only the, the Haldane district money, but the, the people, the taxpayers of our community as well, which have a much higher burden than those of Garrison?
I think that's conversation.
I don't know, Diana, Diana's been through a school mer, a school study merger in her, her former district. I don't know if you want to speak at all.
So, I can tell you my initial thoughts, because I completed a merger study about fi, about six years ago. And one of the reasons why districts merge is because there is an increase in state aid of 40% for the first, it's a 10-year cycle, for the first, I believe it's three years, you get 40%, and then it slowly dwindens through the 10 years. Both Garrison and, and Haldane have very little state aid coming in, so, especially Garrison. So, there would be, the amount of money that would be offered to the district or increased for our use would be minimal. And so, it's, it's much more lucrative for districts that get a higher level of state aid to merge than it is. It's also a very difficult process, because you have to, you have to first, the boards have to approve going into a merger study. You go into it, you begin the process, you have the public meetings, you go through a lot of the developmental stages, then you have a straw vote, and both districts have to say yes in the straw vote, yes, we want to continue to talk about this. And I can tell you, probably 90 to 95% of the time, they go down at that point. If the straw vote is yes in both districts, then you continue on, and you go through the full merger study and discussion, and then both districts have to vote at the end. And so, it is one of the more divisive, uncomfortable scenarios that I think a district can go through. And gen, generally, it does not go. It's very, very, very few districts that actually do merge, especially now. But one of the things, for Haldane and Garrison, financially, there would be almost no benefit, because we do get so little state aid.
And it's not like there's a lot of, and one of the things, I mean, in, in interviewing the superintendents, we've, we've communicated to these candidates, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of middle management, like, in either district, so I can't imagine, like, where, like, where you would consolidate, right? Like, I, first of all, I don't think it would ever happen, but, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure, there again, I'm not sure-
Right, because the transportation costs would increase.
You'd, but, yeah, but you'd still-
But, like, maybe you could decrease.
Right.
Generally, I don't know.
It shows, when you actually do a budget, there is actually an increase in the spending initially, and then it kind of settles out. And if you have an additional 40% of state aid, and you get a lot of state aid, you can absorb that easily, and then work it out. But if you're not getting that benefit, and there's increased costs, it's problematic. And you write, you would have one superintendent instead of two, you'd have one director of transportation, you'd have one business manager, and you would, and then there may be, you probably would have no, with the reorganization, you'd still have the same number of principals, you'd still have the same number of teachers. So, there's minimal level of savings that you can have, and it's a one-shot deal, and it goes away. And so, it's, it's a complicated thing to, to work with, and having been through it, I can tell you, I would never recommend it.
There weren't some merger study done.
Having been part of this community for a very long time, as well as having the, a former board president present here, I can tell you, this conversation has come up many, many, many times. And Mike, if you-
It's been brought up a thousand times, by the way.
I'm not going to cut you off this time, Mike.
That's all right, we're in, we're in free form for the moment.
It's, it's been brought up a thousand times. I believe there is, even if you look back on the minutes of the notes of previous boards, they've looked at it with the consolidation before the laws came like that, Ms. Bowers said. But what it requires also, correct me if I'm wrong if things have might have changed, but you have to have a vote in both districts, the community members, and Garrison, most likely, I'm not picking fights, would vote it down, because they don't, they don't have a high school.
Right.
The most expensive thing is a high school. So, they would vote it down, because their taxes would astronomically go up from studies that we looked at, and ours would go down. So, in Colespringe, they go down, Phillips Town, well, Colespringe itself, I won't talk about the other parts of the district, but Colespringe would go down, Garrison would go up. So, right now, their tuition base that I believe is $13,233. So, each student, we give, Garrison's $13,000 that they have to pay compared to what the high school cost. So, that's where it comes down to every time.
Yeah, no, and, and it's probably something to take up with the state and not, not here, but I do think it's something that should be looked at annually, because maybe there's, it does seem that there's a shift now, because the Garrison School is having the opposite problem that we do, where they don't have enough students in a lot of the classes. So, that could be, you know, yes, there would be a shared, you know, superintendent, but also probably elementary school, where it seems like there's always been a problem with bubble classes or whatever. When they have the opposite problem there, there might be more savings than, than we estimate now. I'm, I'm just saying, I think it's, it's something that should be consistently looked at.
So, generally, also, just so you understand what the options are, there's also the possibility of annexation. And generally, when you have a small district and a larger district, the larger district absorbs the smaller district as far as annexation goes. So, it doesn't always have to be a merger, and there are different regulations, and there are different needs. But what Mike was talking about was the tax on true, and the, if, it's the amount that you pay per, per thousand of assessed valuation, and there usually is one district that's a winner and one that's a loser. And I think that's what he was talking about.
Keep, keep the ideas coming, Evelyn, because-
Thanks. Cory, question?
Hi, I want to thank the board for all of your incredibly difficult work that you've been doing. I do also, though, feel that I should speak on record a little bit about the evolution of the library garden position, simply because I was the PTA Garden Committee Chair at the point, at that time in history. And I wish that, as much as I love Mr. Wallach, but I wish that Principal Harrington, our former principal, could be here just for this night, because he could explain this probably even better than I could. But I did have a lot of discussions with him leading up to this, and I, I was on the committee as the PTA representative that hired for that position. And I believe Ms. Eisler was also on that committee, and Danielle Pack McCarthy, who is here in the audience, too. So, they remember that entire process. And I'm sure you could look through the records and find a description of the position as it was advertised, which you guys probably have somewhere. Am I speaking too loudly?
No.
Sorry, sorry. So, the position as it was written and advertised for was very clear, that that particular TA would be doing not only library, but also garden education. So, from my understanding, and from having talks with Mr. Harrington at the time, this was not purely a library position that had kind of the perks of some garden added to it, or that the garden at that point was, the educational piece was purely one done by parents. It had been prior to that, and I've been one of those parents, you guys all know that about me. But really, the position was created in order to solve the issues that we were finding, those of us with boots on the ground, where teachers were feeling a little inundated and, and expecting too much, that they should be doing more in the garden. And garden parents, some came in and did a lot, some couldn't do much at all, some classes didn't have them at all, and we were facing an equity issue. And that's what Mr. Harrington saw. And this was his attempt to solve that issue by kind of institutionalizing the educational piece somewhere in the elementary building. Now, the program is in its second year only, and I recognize that it's, it's had to move and shift and grow, and there may absolutely be ways in which it grows and shifts and changes as well. There's no doubt. But to say that there's absolutely no curriculum, and thank you, Mr. Wallach, for correcting that, we, as a garden committee, have been supplying teachers and administrators with actual garden curriculum sites that are Common Core standard-aligned, that can be accessed on the website. Our website has got more curriculum than most other school garden websites have, and we've also been, I only have one minute left? Okay. Talking fast.
You're over your minute.
Shh. I'm moving in a minute, too.
You could come back.
Over three minutes.
I'm at three minutes.
We appreciate it.
I'll come back.
No, 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 no.
Can I, can I keep talking? All right, really fast. So, the whole issue is, is that we recognize that there may be changes that need to be made, but clearly, you've heard from the community that this piece of education at Haldane is as important as the TOSA positions. It aligns with the strategic plan. So, if you don't institutionalize it on some level and keep it there, then you're losing sight of an amazing resource, and garden parents will not continue to come forward, ad infinitum, and do all the work that we've been doing all these years. You guys know all of this stuff, and I don't, you know, I'm not-
We get it.
I, I get what you get, and you get what I get. It's just that when you talk about it, and you say that it's purely a garden program run by parents, and that as the program stands now, that it doesn't really have meat to it, I think that also is not helping the population at large understand the program. So, I would urge you to just talk to the people who have been involved with the garden from day one, and they will also help explain it in a way where it's understandable. Literacy happens out there all the time, and frankly, the garden, because it's outdoor learning, you may go visit the garden, your child, perhaps three times in one week, because that's when those particular plants are growing, and that particular lesson can be taught. And then you might spend a whole week doing nothing but reading and literacy and research and all of that. This program has to be flexible. And I know that school is organized in a way where things are very organized and compartmentalized, and, and you have mandates, and yes, you have to have curriculum aligned and all of that. That's what we've been trying to help you guys do for years. And this program- that's what we've been trying to help you guys do for years, and this program, however it evolves, has to remain somewhat flexible because of the nature of outdoor learning, so I urge you to just keep those all in mind moving forward, thank you.
My name's Caitlin Chadwick.
You guys sick of my face yet? I don't like doing this speaking thing, I like to do things behind the scenes, but I felt like it was necessary this evening, I've, I've really been in the middle of a lot of conversations, and I'm comfortable doing that, but really, how this process has gone is really unfortunate, we need to be able to trust you guys, right, we need to be able to say, I trust the board, I trust the district, to make the right decision for my child, however, it's really hard to build that trust when information isn't delivered in a way that's understandable, maybe more direct, more concise, more understandable, I like to hear layman's terms, I'm not good with acronyms, and I have to tell you, the reason why I signed my name on the list is because a comment was passed that you have to be in a meeting to understand, I'm at Board of Ed meetings, I read the minutes, I read the agenda, I watch the videos while editing for hours at my computer, I'm on the board of the PTA, I'm involved with the Arts Alliance, I'm a class parent, I'm really involved, yet I don't understand, and that's a problem that needs to be repaired, and for the sake of the people out here, like, a lot of the conflict that's happened in the past week, I feel was completely avoidable, and I don't want to see it happen again, and as a community, as somebody who's involved in the PTA, I want to know what we can do to prevent that from happening again, and if we can work together to kind of find a way, to find that common ground before it gets to the point of being polarized, it's just really upsetting, so, I know I usually make lots of jokes, but this was very serious tonight, so, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Liz Kelly.
Hi, thank you, Corey spoke beautifully about the garden program, and I just wanted to reiterate some of those points and maybe bring a few other points to it, as a volunteer, that equity issue was one that I noticed from the get-go, last year in kindergarten, one class, we were able to get the kids out to the garden every single week, that was one of the classes, the other class, not as much, as the grade levels go up, the demands within the classroom get more and more, and it's more difficult for me as a parent, as my kids are getting older and I'm doing more work to get in and volunteer, so equity is a huge part of this, and it's also, it's great to say, yeah, we see kids out there all the time, sure, kids might be out there all the time, but it's, but every child, maybe their experience is once a month, or, and the great thing about library is that, the library garden program is that those elementary kids are getting outside more or less once a week regularly as part of an institutionalized schedule, it's so valuable, and as, you know, Laura and I were working together in the first year, seeing, bringing the kids out once a week, our thought was, you know, these kids need to be outside every day, like, this has to happen more and more and more, it's just to, to bring it in, the institutionalization factor is huge, and then I think it's also, it's difficult to hear, we have a lot, we have this garden program, that's the PTA program, it's volunteer-based, I'm not qualified to develop curriculum, as you're saying, we see the need to integrate the garden program with curriculum, and we've been trying and trying to do that, there are people within our community that, that is their expertise, that they do that, they work with schools and they develop outdoor education that integrates with the curriculum, and we know from study after study that if the kids get outside and they learn these lessons, that they're reinforced and improve academic performance, it's so important, it's just really vitally important, so, again, I would like to, I would love the, to help work, develop the literacy and garden education program together, that's something, it would be great to develop that, but what I'm hearing is, well, if it doesn't fit into a curriculum, then it's going to be eliminated, that's my point of fear, to hear this, what I want to hear is that we value outdoor education and its role within our community, and we will, and we will work together to strengthen that program, thank you.
Are there any others?
I don't have any more names on the list.
Hi, I don't have anything really prepared, so I'm just going to ramble until you tell me to, to go, but I guess, I understand that you are all volunteers, and, and sure, it is not an easy job, and, you know, we're grateful that you have stood up to volunteer to, you know, take this position and, and, you know, be the, the leadership of our community, it can't be easy, but, but I'm disappointed, and I think the reason I'm disappointed is because it's true that, you know, what you say, that, that the community should go to meetings, or they should read the minutes, or, or watch the videos so we know what goes on in the, in the meetings, and you're right, I think the community has a responsibility, but equally, the board and the superintendent have their responsibilities, and I think the main responsibility is to really, really feel the pulse of the community, you know, I mean, it's not just up to the community to tell you directly through letter-writing what we want, you should feel that, and the way you feel that is by seeing what happens in the school during the school day, and if you took the time, and I'm, I'm not saying you don't, but if you were to take the time during a school day and see what happens in the elementary school during garden library time, or during the other times where we have, as many mentioned, these volunteer parents that volunteer in the elementary classrooms to help out in the garden, who are either creating their own curriculum because they have expertise in that, maybe they're educators, but they're not educators, you know, in schools, but maybe they have that ability, and so, they're creating curriculum and making lesson plans, and, and almost, in a way, co-teaching with some of the elementary school teachers, and if you see that, and then you hear from the community, the parents who say, oh my goodness, my kid just came back and told me that what they, what they learned in the garden today, or what they learned, you know, or they, they picked a carrot from the garden, they ate it, and it was so amazing, they said they loved carrots, and the parents said, oh my goodness, my child never liked vegetables before, and now they love vegetables, this is the pulse, when you hear that there are 350 signatures on a letter, because- I passed my time, okay, I just want to say that that's the responsibility, we have a remarkable community, and if you would please just pay more attention, then I think we wouldn't have these problems, thank you.
Can I just say one thing, no, I'm sorry, Peggy, no, no, I, I just, because, when I told, I was responding, someone asked a direct question, how they can get information, better information from the board, so my response was to come to a board meeting, okay, where you can speak to the whole board and the superintendent at one shot, okay, that was my direct answer to the question, how can I get information, so, that, that's what I, that's what I meant by saying that, by no way do I mean, like, if you don't come to a board meeting, you have no right to speak, or, or I have, have an opinion, I was not trying to get at that in any way, I just know, you know, over the years, many people have talked about running into people at Foodtown and stuff like that, and, and, and I don't really get hassled, maybe I'm not as visible as many of, some of the other board members, but I don't get hassles, I, I, 11 years on the board, I got one phone call, okay, to my house, so, don't be jealous, so, my point is, so if you wanted to ask me, if you wanted to get what I was thinking as, as, as 20% of the board, you'd have to come to a board meeting to, to get it from me, okay, so, that's all I was, I was getting at, somebody asked a direct question, and that was my, 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 my answer, so.
Can I just say that I think the board and Dr. Bowers and the administration has really been listening to the community, and that's why we're on proposal number four, that's just kind of where I lie in this, had we not been listening and getting a pulse on the community, we would have been at proposal one, and that's not how this works, and we understand that, and we're trying to do the best that we can to meet everybody, what everybody would like to see, and it's just not possible to have everything and make every single person happy, we recognize that, but we're doing the best that we can in attempting to be the best that we can be, and really focus on our children and give them the best opportunities that we can, and to your point, Caitlin, I do agree that perhaps the communication and the rollout, and maybe the changes from one, two, three, four, and the in-betweens, I feel like I've lived with you for the past- So, I do appreciate that, and sometimes it's hard to roll out all of that information, right, in, in a manner that is clear, and I think we can do a better job, the administration can do a better job presenting that, and maybe us, the board, as it's being presented to us, can also try to relay those messages, so.
I want to clarify that I don't want to offend anybody.
No.
I can't be very offensive, but not now, I don't know why we're here, right, because we have a population of people that were really passionate about safety, we had a population that was, and nothing is really being lost, but we're still here and we're still upset, and I'm going to speak for everybody, why is that, do you know what I mean, why, why aren't these people trusting you to make the right decision, why do they feel like you don't stand behind that program, and I don't, I don't know enough about the way this works and about candor, maybe I'm just way too blunt for my own good, but I guess it, just to be able to hear, we really think that the garden program is an asset, it's in line with the strategic plan, and we are willing, able, and ready to make it work, it is not, it's, I don't know if it's that, if it's the lack of, do you see what I'm saying, I feel like if we were just a little bit more direct, then maybe we wouldn't be here and, and be so, you know, like this, whatever that means, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, well, I just want to say two things about that, I think Mr. Wallach said it pretty perfectly, actually, he said, yes, there's a garden curriculum, it can get tightened up, and we need to focus on a literacy curriculum and bringing them together, I mean, I, I think that's what, that was, what was said, I don't think anybody's devaluing outdoor education, I think, you know, so I feel like what Mr. Wallach said sums it up for how the administration views the garden program, which to me is pretty positive.
But it's coming from Mr. Wallach and not the district, I know that he's part of it, but you see how it's, it's just different, and I, I just appreciate the fact that you're willing to hear and willing to grow, and let's make this a little bit better, so we don't have this again, I don't want this again.
Yeah, I agree.
Please, thank you.
We have three minutes, I'm hearing that Mike D'Jules is on the list again? Okay, well, the tape is going to run out, so that's what I'm getting at. So, all of your, all of your comments may not be taped if we don't get this right, okay.
First off, I want to say thank you very much for what you did, I've been on that side of the table, I know how hard it is, how difficult it was, and you did your job, because the budget is getting a number to the public, it's not about anything else but getting that number to the public, yes, there are cuts, cuts hurt, I always said, you want to fill this house, you cancel kindergarten, and you'll, you put that on the street and you'll, you'll fill the room, and quite, it happens, and to your, it happens, it will happen.
We're not canceling kindergarten, don't go put that on Facebook.
Well, you don't want to fill the room.
It's not happening.
So, when you, when you got your number, you, you did come to the people, and you did listen to what they had to say, and you're going to have meetings like this, as you know, there, there's going to be word of mouth, because Cold Spring is the biggest rumor mill out there, it's the biggest fish tank, but I thank you for what you did, you did a great job because you got both sides, you know, because they heard cuts here, cuts there, you got people to come to a meeting, which is a good thing, you know, you have your voice be heard, but you got a number, your job is to get a number that will pass, because the opposite of that, it's catastrophic, then you won't be talking about anything else, thank you.
And I think I always, since I became a board member, I, I think my motto has always been that not one of us at this table always has the same, same opinion, and it's okay to agree to disagree, and in the long term, if you can come to some sort of conclusion and move forward, that's the best possible solution.
And I think what Michael just said, if it doesn't pass, it could be catastrophic, we're looking at much bigger numbers, and those are going to be much bigger, much bigger cuts, much bigger things to hurt, that's the end of my three minutes.
We have to change the tape, sorry, and then we'll give more opportunity.
Caitlin, there's always room for better communication, and I think I make websites, and sometimes I make them really well, and they communicate very well, and sometimes I, I don't make them well, and they don't, and it's fascinating seeing how effective a well-communicated platform is, so, I definitely suggest we find one, and I think it's easy, especially maybe digitally to do it, and blacking out the names like you see the FBI doing all the time, so, there's that, then, yeah, then I also want to say, there's a few things that happen here at Haldane that are really impressive to me with very small amount of resources, like this room we're in, this is a cafeteria, it's not very big, and I don't remember, my kids are young, so I don't know exactly when lunch starts, but I think some lunches start at like 10:30 in the morning, and the point of this is, I'm here to say, I think we should add another cafeteria to the budget, I'm just kidding, but now that I've, now that I've, now that I've made that totally unrealistic claim, maybe we can go back to saying, look at what we've done with this, right, we've made it work, we have a little and we've done a lot with it, and it's not ideal, but kids get fed, and, and the, the solution is, is there, and I think that we have brain power in this town, I think we have a lot of energy in this town, it's, it's obviously very garden and organic leaning, and I think that's good, but I feel like, I just urge the board to really look at everything, to find money, which is really what this is about, right, the end of the day, it's like, we have to pay for things and we need to find that money, there was a line item that wasn't brought up, which was a $10,000 fuel oil saving, I was an environmental science major, I'm thrilled to see it, right, like, drop the two degrees, I went to the bathroom before the meeting, I have to go again, the boys' bathroom is like at 150 degrees, right, I bet there's five bucks you can save right there, so, my point is, that was really creative and really well-found, and I think it's effective, and I think that if we have that type of surgery on the whole budget, on a view on the whole thing, and I know it's not that simple, I'm not, I'm not trying to dumb down or be ignorant to the complexity, just saying, like, from the cafeteria to that bathroom to the fuel oil, to, to really making it clear to me that I understand that the garden, I learned tonight that the garden wasn't a budget issue and it's a curriculum issue, and now I'm concerned, like, how do I get involved to making sure the curriculum is going to meet what I feel I need, the communication thing, the, the, the point of my whole little mic speech here is to say, I feel that there's, communication can be improved, and, and I don't think that that's a mountain to, to climb, I think we should all pat ourselves on the back for doing a lot with a little cafeteria, case in point, and there are also other opportunities to find money that might be really obvious, like a overheated bathroom, so, I'm just putting it out there that I think that there are a few areas, like the shared SPO with the back door, it's so obvious in hindsight in some ways, and I think it really serves all the concerns, right, like, I don't love the idea of an SPO, I love the idea of the SRO, and I heard quite a bit, I was ignorant to what exactly that position was, it was really nice to hear from the officer's mouth, so, I think things like that were really helpful and changed my mind, so, great job, and I hope we have a, a more positive approach next year, and I really hope that we dig really deep into things like a $10,000 fuel bill that comes out of nowhere, so, there you go, yeah.
Keep fighting for that cafeteria, it sounds unrealistic as you think.
Are there any other further comments, anybody else like to speak, even if you didn't sign in, go ahead. You'll be after Pam, we'll put you in after Damian, thank you.
So, so Damian McDonald, no, quite, quite right, it's, it's, okay, I've been on the stage for many hours where it was 95 degrees, facilities director, what is the status on replacing or getting a new facilities director, because like the gentleman, I forgot your name, I'm sorry, Mark said, it drives me crazy when my daughter comes in, even in the high school, that they have to open windows, and I see just BTUs by the thousands going out the window, and I know that, you know, I was, with Mike and Joe Curdo and everything on the heating committee, so I know how to deal with this building, and I know that the architect, or DeAngelo was, and I read his report- And I know that the architect, or DeAngelo was, and I read his report, so a lot of work needs to be done there. But in the interim, is there anything that could be done with the existing control infrastructure? Because some of it's just minor repairs to the pneumatics that control, like, the stage heating and things like that, where it's just, the, it's, the heating is just non-stop. And at one point, I worked with the other gentleman, or Gary, and whoever they have a contractor, and the boilers were just set on manual, just full-on. And that's such a tremendous waste to heat. And the same thing with electric. So, I think the electric went up year on year, I think in the new budget, if I read that correctly, by about 15,000 to 19,000 or something like that, which doesn't calculate, compute with me, because we have all the occupancy sensors that have been put in, we switched over to LED, we switched over to T5 fluorescents, and we have the photovoltaic arrays. So, that just doesn't, doesn't compute. So, I think that getting a facilities director in here that is schooled, that can handle this, is money well-spent. And I think that for every day that we don't have that type of person, we have risks, right? And we saw that current risk with the fire alarm system that was inactive for quite a period of time, and really doesn't meet today's standards at all. So, when we talk about safety, things like that, just whatever we could do to get a facilities director.
Thank you.
Do you want to talk about the timeline for that, Dr. Bowers?
Well, at this point, we have called for the list. It's a civil service, it's a civil service position. We are in the process of canvassing for the list, and I will begin to screen, just so we know who's there, and then when the new superintendent comes in, that will be their decision.
And just so you know, Damian, we've been on the opposite end during our superintendent interview process, where we've had to put jackets on because we were freezing, and we asked, "Why'd you turn the heat off? We're still here." So, yes, we're fully aware that there's that balance. I believe Pam.
Really don't write on it. It's okay. So, going back to DCI, not such a popular topic tonight, but it is important to me, as most people would know, it's dear to my heart. So, my question is, I understand that the position's being saved, which is wonderful news. I wanted to know if the options for middle and high school students for those classes, have they been diminished? Are they still the same? Have they been expanded in terms of availability and options for, I guess they call them specials still in middle school?
The DCI program, they're, at this point, it's the same, but it really is, will be driven by the numbers of the kids that actually sign up for it at the high school level. The present middle school is the technology rotation that happens with the middle school kids.
So, Dr. Bowers is calling that technology. What happens in six through eight is that everybody in six through eight sees Mr. Duder. Same thing will be happening.
Like art, like health. I think those, so those four quarterly changes will still happen for six through eight.
Yes. That's a mandate.
Okay.
So, that's still going to happen, yeah.
And the high school numbers, the high school sessions will be driven by number of students that are looking to participate.
Right, right.
As is every high school class.
Exactly. I understand. In that would, that, those teachers' positions, would that involve a science night? And would this have any effect on a regents physics class that's not currently being offered at the high school, as I understand that?
I don't think there's a connection with the regents physics class. Again, I guess it would be if it's, if we have the people that would like to take the class, we'll run it. So, I'm not sure where that stands right now, but we've had a night in May, at the end of May, which is a celebration of the deeper learning PBL kind of experiential opportunities that have happened in the district.
Okay, so that's still on the schedule to take place?
Yep.
Okay, great. And then just to go back to Damian's comment about the boiler system and all that, that's been going on for a long time, and it's very complicated. It's not just a quick fix, it's a whole central thing, so.
Thank you.
Thank you on that.
Okay. Are there any other comments from the audience? No? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Before you do that, you want to just review what happens next with the budget for everybody?
Oh, sure. Next budget meeting Tuesday, April 17th. At that time, proposal number four will be presented, and the board will have an opportunity to review again and vote on the budget. Anything else? Just like that? Again, thank you all for coming and voicing your thoughts and opinions, it's really appreciated, and we'll see you next time. Motion? Yeah.
So, you're the motion.
I have the motion.
I'll second, yeah.
Aye.